I open the meeting tonight.
Oh, that's right. Can't even talk you out.
I know. It is 5-0-1. This is the one time of year that I open the meeting. And look for a nomination for a chair. Lisa is willing to be chair again. I don't know if I have a nomination for a six-year chair. Sheila, Wilshire's second call. Any discussion? Any other nominations? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Congratulations. Look at you. The vice chair is the next.
I need a motion for a vice chair. Would like to make that.
And Bernie currently serves as vice chair.
Yes, okay. So would you, well, actually, I'm jumping ahead.
Okay.
I'm looking for a motion for a vice chair. Would you like to make a motion for Bernie?
Second.
Second in the committee. Bill, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Bernie's stating. Great. Looks like we're good to go.
The last thing is to welcome Mary Beth to the board to win the election. And those of you that ran again, thank you. You're back on the board one more time. I don't know if we want to do quick introductions.
Sure.
Just so Mary Beth knows who everybody is here and what town everybody represents.
I'm Carolyn Varon from Camden.
Barbara Noice from Plymouth.
Phil McCormick, Holderness.
Welcome Paul Seadon-Thordon.
Peter Jackson from Romney.
Bertie Solomon from Winmore. Lisa Ash, Plymouth.
Sheila Donahue, Camden.
Patty O'Neil, Holderness.
Tony Sorino-Thordon.
Paul Pizano, Ashland.
Janice Prescott, Secretary for the Board and Administrative Assistant to the Principal.
Me, Lou.
Thank you.
And you want to introduce yourself?
Bonnie Acton, Holderness.
Great. Thank you. And you know everybody at the head table?
Yes.
Are we going to, sorry?
Yeah, sure.
Janet Eccleston, Principal.
Todd Ossley, Athletic Director.
Kyle Welch, Super T. Thank you.
All right. And under review and disposition, any changes?
Yes, just under Other Business, to review the voting results of the Chevy Baker Warren Articles and then Board Roles and Responsibilities.
All right. So privilege in the floor, everybody. Anything tonight or right now? Great. Okay. Approval of the minutes, February 4.
I'll make the motion.
Good. Motion made by Paul, seconded by Carolyn. All those in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Great. Principals report.
Thank you. It's a busy time of year. I've tried to compartmentalize this time of year between vacations. So between the February break and the April break, we do a lot of business. It's our most uninterrupted time instructionally, and it's beginning the hiring season. So there's a lot of moving parts. So I am faithfully still meeting with my full administrative team every week just to make sure that we have everything covered and we're all feeling like we can balance all of the blades in the air. So so far, so good. We are looking to wrap up quarter three, April 3. So that's coming to a quick end here, and then report cards will go home right after that, eight days later on April 10. So teachers are starting that preparation for the end of this kind of mark period, and then we'll look to the last quarter. So that's, you know, that's coming around the corner. In March, we've held two delayed openings. Last time we were together, we talked about one of them was rescheduled for a snow day. And the instructional coordinators are again heading those times. Those are uninterrupted times, Mary Beth, for teachers to have in service, and we're currently working on a curriculum project. The curriculum project is the one I had previously shared with you. I showed you a bit of the blueprint, and hopefully, when we're together in April, I'll be able to show you the work that they've done and what we're going to show publicly to the incoming ninth grade families at Move Up Night. So that's been a three-year project, kind of coming to its first publication. So that's super exciting, and that's the work that we're doing during those delays. We also hold Bobcat Block, and I know we've talked about that before. That's the flex time during the day. One day a week, kids are in advisory, getting some advisory and scheduling, and then the next four days, it's a flex time. Kids go where they need to go. Teachers request who they want. And during that time, it's offered us time to do some other things. And what I wanted to share with you is Sean O'Brien is bringing in Trades Tuesday to our school. So every week, he's working with the Rotary. They're helping connect him with local businesses and community partners, and they're bringing in a workforce to speak to our kids about career pathways, job embedded skills, next steps after high school. We recently had one of our local barbers, and I think this Tuesday, we're bringing in an alum. Dylan Welch is coming back, and he's going to talk about the electrician apprenticeship. So again, I just wanted you to know that we are really making that community connection, and it's very well attended. I just wanted to thank Sean O'Brien for that work.
Can you go over some of the other trades that have come in?
We did have one of the construction companies in.
Playa Construction.
What was the housing? I wish I would have written a few down.
They did plowing, shoveling, landscaping.
Oh, yeah, that one. And kind of just talking about sort of like the pathways that you can take, and they're looking for, also looking for help, and there's some on-the-job training that they're willing to do. So it's getting a lot of momentum, and the kids are talking about it, and so we're constantly sort of seeking that next opportunity.
And the other piece with that, the partnership, we, sometimes you guys get questions about, why don't you have building trades anymore? Why don't you have, you know, certain programs where you have to build up a whole program? So we're kind of taking a creative route in partnering with the companies and getting through extending learning opportunities. Kids can get credit to begin their apprenticeship prior to high school, get hours done, whether it's plumbing, heating, HVAC, and connecting them with businesses that will work with them right in high school to earn a credit, and then get hopefully hired or go into a pathway or not based on experience. We've had some kids start, you know, thinking they maybe want to be a teacher, and then it's, whoa, I don't want to do this, or something else that they've tried. So that really has been beneficial. That's been expanding from year to year because it's been so popular.
And the Rotary is just getting used to us, and so it's kind of building that relationship. And, you know, so Sean really spearheading that, and it's gone great. Recently, we had 51 members inducted into the National Honor Society, the National Technical Honor Society. I'm going to try not to steal Mason's thunder here. He's going to talk a little bit about that. But what I wanted to highlight for you is the keynote speaker was John Spear. It's been a longstanding tradition here that we try to give our retirees the first opportunity to speak publicly before they retire. He did take the opportunity to do that induction, and it almost was hard to not celebrate him that evening as much as we were celebrating the students. He did such a nice job. He was so reflective and so thoughtful and really spoke so highly of his time, both as a teacher and his time at Plymouth High School. So it was by far one of the nicest ceremonies we've seen in a long time, and he really captivated the message to the kids. He really focused on teamwork, and he just tied it all together. It was a really nice evening, and I know Mason mentioned it to you as well. That ceremony used to be done separately, and in recent years, that ceremony has come together, and I think it was a nice change. And the two advisors, Julie O'Brien and Jay O'Garty, had that induction ceremony. And then, you know, and then obviously the societies thereafter. So that was a really nice celebration. I'm going to just front-load a little bit for you the next time we're together, which is April 1, only because it's going to be Move Up Night, and I'm going to try to be in two places at once. And what I wanted to tell you is that it is Move Up Night. We are welcoming all of our incoming ninth graders at the next board meeting. So there'll be a lot of community in the building that night. We are doing a lot of the things that we've done, except for shifting the parent evening. And last year, we had a speaker, and this year, we're going to give them an access to a panel of people, administration, kids, other parents, and then we're going to give them an opportunity to tour the building at Open House in the fall. They wanted a little bit more kind of like, what is high school really like? Oftentimes, you send your kid to a Move Up Night, and when they get home, you say, well, how did it go? And they say, I don't really remember. So we're going to try to give the parents some direct information and get them in an engagement, you know, in a question-and-answer with us. So we're excited about that. And the other thing I wanted you to know is we're going to advertise that evening is on April 7. We're bringing in a project here around cell phones. I know that's kind of a hot topic still. There's a lot of conversation that Kyle and I are aware about in our younger buildings. There's, some buildings are exploring weekly, and just the idea about the relationship that kids have with technology. So this is a young man from California we're bringing in. It's called Project Reboot. I am going to give you a handout. And what's really exciting about this for Plymouth is that he's going to talk to the kids in two different groups. He's then going to talk to our staff at a staff meeting, and then he's going to have a parent night from 6:00 to 7:30. And he's not coming in with, he's not on one side. He's not like, let's give them phones all the time, or let's give them phones none of the time. He's about educating kids about the phone. So we're really hoping that that's well received. We're going to start to advertise that. You're certainly welcome to come. So that's after, the next time we're together. But I just wanted to front-load, if you want to put dates on your calendar, I'll give you the handout.
I support coming to that. Project Reboot is amazing. I've seen him speak. As a parent of a teenager and a sixth grader, it was so informationally helpful. He gave great information.
Great. So we're hoping they get, you know, so I'll give you the handout. I'll give you the link. You're welcome. Like I said, it's hiring season, so we are beginning to interview for our open positions. I'll just remind you what's open. Marketing, Mr. Spear's retiring. Carol Lee Simmons is retiring from Word Language, and Tom Ram is retiring from Social Studies. So we've put those processes in. I have administrators running those interview teams, and we're hoping to have some nominations for you April 1. The one new position that we put in, .5 Special Educator, .5 Out of District Coordinator, we have posted that since the operating budget was approved. So that'll be sort of the last one, likely not ready for April 1. And then there's just been some really amazing kid celebrations that I'm just going to share with you, because I think there were sharing. We had Reagan Sutherland. She went to Poetry Out Loud. She won the school competition. She won the regional competition, and she was just the state champion. So she is moving on to the national competition in DC the first weekend in May. So I don't know that that's ever happened here, but it's a huge recognition, and she is going to travel to DC with Lori Devaux. So that's really exciting. We also sent our theater off to regionals this past weekend. They also won the regional festival. So they are moving on to states. And in that group, we had a number of kids receive individual awards, and Clara McCauley received the outstanding overall performance. So just another, you know, really exciting time. You know, Audrey has only been with us for two years, and she's really brought that theater program along. There are, most kids actually from Plymouth receive some sort of recognition. So she will go on. We don't have the details of all that, but I'll bring that in April for the field trip and stuff. They don't have all that figured out. But I know it's April 11 and 12. So congratulations to them. And then lastly, you going to talk about cross country?
Yeah, I can talk about that.
Okay. And I will just mention that one of the wrestlers, Haley Demer, who had been previously the state champion in the girls wrestling, she unfortunately was hurt this year, but she was awarded a $2,000 scholarship for her continuing education from the Referees Association. So just so many accolades for our Plymouth High School kids. They're going out in other places and really representing Plymouth really well. So I just wanted to celebrate those with you.
So cultural arts.
Are you doing cultural arts? Lastly, I always give you a copy of the Bobcat Bee. We'd be here all night if I went through everything that's going on here, but I'll give you a copy of this, I believe, tonight. Questions for me?
All right. Mason, take it away.
I have a good amount of stuff. It's been a while since I've been here. So, yeah, to start off, Mrs. Eccleston mentioned NTHS and NHS inductions. So late January, all of the juniors were invited after they met the requirements. And then last Monday, the 10th, we had a reduction. So all of them were there, their parents were there, and then all current members, seniors, were also required to be there. So it's a really nice kind of community moment for our classes, and just really good moment to recognize all of them for their achievements in high school so far. In addition to that, last week, we had a hypnotist come. This was sponsored by Yalta Youth Leadership Through Adventure, which is led by Mr. O'Brien. So another really fun kind of community engagement event here at Plymouth. There were about 100 students and families who came, so really good way to get everyone here and engaged, and also kind of expand people's knowledge and information about Yalta and Mr. O'Brien. So that's really fun. Over the weekend, on Saturday, we had our pre-legislative session for Student Senate. So we had seven of us go down to the Capitol, and we spent a day down there kind of running through what we'll be doing in April, which, so from April 11 to the 12 is our overnight, which is a Friday/Saturday where we engage in block legislature, which then if it runs through the entirety of what we do, Governor Ayotte will kind of pass it off to actual representatives and senators, which is cool. So we actually can have somewhat of an effect on the legislature of New Hampshire. And then after that, we had winter sports wrapping up. One big achievement was girls Nordic were state champions for the second time. Last year was the first time we didn't, or first time recently. We moved up to Division One this year, which was also really exciting to kind of move on to different competition. And we also had boys Nordic were runners-up. Since I've been on the team, we have been runners-up, so that's really exciting for us. Team-wise, a good amount of us are seniors who have graduated, so a really great way to ramp off the season with that. And then we also just have spring sports starting. No track preseason has started. Lacrosse has. So we can go over those, which is always fun. The week before our vacation, we also had the Penguin Plunge, which is a lot done by Mrs. Del Fons. It's a kind of a week, and then has the finale on Friday, the kind of class competition and fun games, but the whole focus of it is to raise money for the Special Olympics. So we came in first for money raised of all the schools in New Hampshire, which was about 20 that participated. We raised $23,202, which is really exciting. Mrs. Del Fons puts an extreme amount of time and effort into this, as well as all the students who help out and raise money on their own as well. We also had our Winter Formal on March 14, also led by Mrs. Del Fons. Around 200 students came is what she was estimating. Really good way for students to just get involved and have some fun at the school. And then, as Mrs. Eccleston mentioned, we have Cultural Arts Night on the 20th, from 4:30 to 6:30. Really great night for all the schools in the SAU as they all display their arts, whether it's actual art, theater, or any musical performances as well. There is going to be a musical performance from 6:00 to 7:00 in the auditorium, which is really exciting. A lot of effort put on there by Mr. Gunn, and I know they'd be really excited to see the board there. So if you'd like to, please come. And then just finally, we have our senior trip coming up, March 27 to 29. So we're going to New York City for three days. There's 80 of us going. Going to spend some time in Times Square, exploring the city. We have a Broadway show set up to go to. So really exciting overall.
Thanks, Mason.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mason? Good job. Okay. Next committee meetings, we're meeting at April 15.
Yep.
We don't have any?
No reports. I mean, I could go over the discussion I have now with the committee assignments. So we have two committees at the high school, Operations and Teaching and Learning. If you have any interest or want to switch committees or need to stay, just get in touch with Lisa. Lisa will assign the committees, as well as the chairs for each of the committees, and then we meet, try to meet once a month on committee pieces throughout the year, so.
And I'm just, this is just the manifest schedule, and Mary Beth, I plugged you in.
Thank you.
But we can certainly look at dates, and then, I think, Kyla, you and I talked about Mary Beth plugging into where Greg was, but that can be, you know, whatever you are. It's fine. It's great. And I know.
So just let me know before the next meeting for anybody if you have any changes, and then Mary Beth can go over.
Can you?
I think Greg was on the teaching and learning.
And I tried to, I think before I've done the manifest, that's your month, but, you know, say if your month's May, you want to prove it the first week of June. So it's always the month happens, and then Jen has it all prepped. She'll reach out sometimes, say it's Bernie, myself, and her, and she'll just remind you and work on a date via email. And then I'm not on a month, but I'm right next door. If anybody runs into a problem or they run out of time, I can finish it up whenever anything needs. And then, did you say, Kyla, too, if you're on a committee and you want to switch, let us know too?
Just let you know. Or me, either one, for the next meeting. Great. Lisa will assign.
All right. And then, discussion items, international travel, do we have any?
So, I'm just going to, I'm going to hand this up. So the first piece from the last committee meeting, we had a proposal from students about international travel. So the board asked me to just check the liability, so we did check with Primex, and they do cover it, and we do follow all the guidelines committed, so I just wanted to pass around. And it's on the second page of this handout, and it's just Primex Guidelines for International Travel. So it's just for your reference. And Jen, if you want to go.
Yeah.
And I think we're looking for a vote on this for, in two weeks. It's just, if you have a chance over the next couple of weeks, take a look at the liability, if you have any questions, and then any questions on the details of the trip. Again, we'd like to agree to vote.
So when T and Harper were here, they sort of alluded to being familiar with a travel company. This is the travel company that they're most familiar with. T, in particular, his dad has worked in the other high schools that he mentioned with this company. So it's really vetted, it's, you know, it has good success. It's actually focused on small group travel. That's kind of like their niche. If you just look at that grid, it kind of outlines what these kids are proposing. It's a seven-day excursion. Cecile would obviously be the advisor. The departure would be from Boston, and they're looking at the April break, so they're not looking at, you know, missing school necessarily for this. The program asks for a minimum of eight. It's a one-to-six ratio for chaperone to student. You'll see the cost there. It's all-inclusive, flight, lodging, and I think it's a two-meal plan.
And the chaperones are covered.
Yeah.
So it's not, no cost.
No cost to the district, right. And then it just goes through, you know, obviously some, you know, other some bullet points. You know, I don't expect you to read and digest tonight, so please take it. There's a cancellation deposit, all kind of standard. There is a cancellation insurance that people can opt into. So just take a look at it. On the last page, it kind of gives breakdown, the itinerary between days 1 through 7, a little bit more if you are curious about where they were going and what they'd be seeing. Again, I think there's some flexibility, but I think this is what they really outlined as a group. I did talk to Cecile. I said, do you think you have a minimum of eight? And she said, yes, absolutely. Which I didn't know what the other.
It was actually much more than that.
Yeah, I think she's looking at two chaperones. So there's definitely some interest. Yeah. Yeah. So we'll look, we'll.
So take a look at it over the next couple of weeks. If you have any questions, bring it back, but if we can get moving on it after April, that would be great to get clear. Okay, great. Anyone have any questions?
Is there any provision for a student who would benefit from going and really want to go but can't afford it?
Well, there are some community resources that they could tap into privately, you know.
That's where we usually direct kids, the assistance. And all, and those resources have been very helpful with anything from winter program to field trips to stuff like this. Yeah. Any other questions? Okay, Todd, who else? I saw.
Sure.
So we did get a request. So for the past few years, the Lakes Region, and girls hockey is pretty sporadic in the state, as far as trying to find one team to hold. What school will hold one team of all the girls? There's just not enough girls. So there's many cooperatives being formed, the two districts, three districts, to get girls to play competitively within the NHIAA. We had, I think, between the three of us, we received several requests from parents to bring this forward, or to do the research for it. And then Todd has kind of worked with NHIAA and the surrounding towns with the proposal with no cost to the district at this point. So the proposal is for tonight. It is tonight because we are dealing with a past deadline that we need to move on, but I think it can be worth it, so I'll give it over to you.
Yeah, so it actually started almost, let's say, a couple of years ago. Parents started reaching out to me, their students are going to be freshman next year. So that kind of brought it to light at this point. At the same time, I also had a school reach out to me asking if we had any girls interested in playing hockey. Kingswood Regional, which is in Wolfboro. The AD there, since then, is no longer the AD, but he is the head coach of the hockey team, so that connection's still there. The new AD and I have been talking the last three months or so, along with the AD from Prospect Mountain School. Kingswood and Prospect are currently in a co-op situation for girls hockey, and the proposal would be that we would add to that. The NHIAA asked that these proposals come in at the end of the season by the last date to play, which has passed probably two weeks ago now. But I've talked with the NHIAA, and as soon as we get the okay, if we do, from our school board, and then the Kingswood School Board and the Prospect Mountain School Board, that we can all do it together, the hockey committee will convene and vote on this so we can move forward if that's the case. So with all that being said, we would like our girls to have an opportunity to play with other girls. Kingswood is a bit of a ride. Our boys hockey right now is in a co-op with Kearsage Regional High School, which is about the same distance in the opposite direction, but about an hour away. And, you know, that started probably 15 years ago with a group of parents, same idea. They were traveling their kids to the hockey rinks and getting them time to play. Started as a club. Numbers kind of dwindled. We had to co-op to sustain the program. So right now, Kingswood and Prospect Mountain, they have about 22 girls on the team that losing eight to graduation. So next year, from the parents that have reached out to me, we're going to have three students here that are going to want to play hockey. If this is passed, they would love to play with other girls. So right now, practices would all be held at the Popwell Ice Arena. That's in Wolfboro. Transportation, we would ask. Some of our other independent sports, we have swimming. Gymnastics is one of, you know, one swimmer, a couple of girls are on gymnastics. The parents would be allowed to transport them to the practices and games for now, once the numbers get bigger. We have no discussion about that. But for next year and probably the year after, it would be parent transport to the practices. But for next year and probably the year after, it would be parent transport to the practices. Kingswood would take responsibility for paying for the ice time and the officials for the foreseeable future. So that, that's very, very big. I don't know if people know a lot about ice time, but it's very hard to get and it's fairly expensive. So that's a big hurdle that they're willing to take on so they can get our girls and sustain their program. Away game transport, Kingswood has offered to provide that transport. But we would need to get to a certain spot. So it's kind of, in my opinion, and talking with the ADs from Kingswood and Prospect Mountain, it would benefit us to have our parents drive directly to most of the arenas for games as well. Coaches would, they're all in place right now. So the coaches that are in place would stay as coaches. I would ask that somebody would be kind of our liaison to this team, a Plymouth person. Like in the boys program right now, we have Zane Dawson is our Plymouth representative. He's the assistant coach on the team, so he travels, you know, with them and he's with them for practices. And they have a boss because there's like 15 women, so it's a little different setup right now. But I would ask somebody to be that person for, for our kids. So obviously the three ADs, we would collaborate on all, you know, all the decisions for the team. And, you know, there's some other, the numbers here. There's one division in girls hockey, so the number of students doesn't really matter. We were all in division, played division one. And that's about it. So next year, I mentioned, we're going to have three girls that are committed to play. I've gotten probably seven to 10 other emails from the parents of student athletes that are playing hockey now that, you know, once they come to the high school, they would want to play girls hockey and play with girls and not on a co-ed team, if that would be. So over the next like four-year cycle, if you will, three girls coming next year, but there'll probably be eight to 10 girls that would be here when these next year's freshmen are seniors. So we'd have that a little bit of a larger group. So it's on the rise, people want to do it. And I think it'd be a good opportunity for our girls to play on a team with other, with other girls.
Questions for Todd? Yes, Barb?
Equipment costs, how will that be?
So the equipment for hockey is provided by, by the families. So right now, even our boys team, all that is provided. Uniforms for the boys are provided by the schools. For next year, they have all the uniforms in place, so we're just going to, being the new team, we'll just use what they have for the uniforms.
I'm sorry, would you repeat that?
For uniforms, they're already in place, they have them.
Okay.
So when, if this was sustainable and we were there, next time the uniform cycle comes through, they'd probably change the design a little bit and add a little navy blue. But right now, they already have all the uniforms in place.
Simple question back to. Two questions. If a student wants to play but doesn't have their resources, is there a way for them to be subsidized?
I mean, just like Kyla mentioned earlier, there are, you know, the community resources for that. Right now, that would be something we, I guess we'd have to discuss. We were going to provide money, equipment and stuff for them, for the athletes to do.
Would a student know to ask for help with that?
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
We would reach out, yeah. So we, you know, if this goes through, we'd, you know, open it up. If anybody's interested in girls hockey, we'd have a meeting. I mean, there'd be a lot to do between now and next November, but yeah, we'd make sure they know.
And are you concerned about it taking away from another winter sport?
No. Because in my, you know, I've only been AD for four years, but with hockey, kids that are going to play hockey, that's what they do in the winter, they play hockey. So they're not really going to just jump over, I don't believe, to, to another sport. Well, it won't completely decimate anything else.
Phil?
A concern I have, and even with the boys, is the travel in the wintertime. I mean, that road over to Wolfboro, 109, that's not a good road. And related to that, do we know when we would have ice time? Because sometimes in order to get ice time, as you know, it's six o'clock in the morning or something like that.
So right, so right now, Kingswood has, the girls team has probably the best ice time, if you will. They're going from, right now, it's three, four thirty. That's, that's pushing it for us to get there.
Yeah.
What I've been, you know, in communication with that, they would switch with the boys. So they'd go at four thirty, the boys would go at three.
How many?
Yes, Phil?
How many nights a week would they practice?
So right now, they do three nights a week and then they have a game two nights a week.
So it's, so you're five, five nights? Is there any expense to the district?
Not at, not at this time, no.
Barbara?
I was thinking about insurance for any and everybody that's involved in this. Are they covered by us or do they have to cover, cover their own insurance for this? Especially I'm thinking about those who.
They're covered by us if it's board approved. Anything that's board approved is covered by.
Same to the parents who are driving, would we know who they are and?
It's the same certification policy that we have for gymnastics and swimming.
Okay.
Phil?
Is there any other opportunity, like youth program for, in this case, girls to play?
Not in the immediate area, no, no. So I did ask around to some of the other more local schools and they're either already in a co-op with somebody or just didn't have the interest or numbers.
I guess I was thinking like youth programs, not necessarily another high school team. You know, it's like.
So we've had girls in the past that are, were hockey players that didn't want to, again, play on a co-ed team. So they traveled to Concord or Manchester to get that opportunity to play. I forgot the names of the teams.
Yeah, you only have a co-ed opportunity in Plymouth for girls. You have to seek girls in larger areas.
But if, but if.
So Concord, Manchester.
In order to have an opportunity, if this didn't work out, there is a possibility of an opportunity for, you know, the kids who really enjoy playing hockey and want to play hockey.
Only if they want to play co-ed, right?
No, if they wanted to, I'm saying if they want to go like to a Concord.
They could travel to Concord or Manchester, probably for the team.
Because I think hockey is a lot like gymnastic, you travel all over the countryside.
They're used to traveling an hour from the inquiries that we got, we're not a barrier. That's what they do. Any other questions?
Sort of related to it, is there interest in scholarships? Like girls hockey scholarships to universities? I hear and read about those as being one of the most, biggest opportunities for girls in universities. Is there a strategy behind that with this to support girls?
I mean, just this would be a good step to start that process, you know. You know, getting college scholarships aren't always easy in athletics, but, you know, if you don't have a team to play for, then you're probably not going to get that scholarship.
Okay, great. So would someone like to make a motion about this program? Or do people need more time? Were people out?
Do you need a decision tonight?
You're on deadline, right?
Yeah, so Kingswood, just for informational sake, they have a school board meeting coming, I want to say the 21st. Oh, second base.
Okay, so Paul, you'd like to make a motion?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the girls hockey program proposal by Mr. Austin.
Seconded by Tony. All right, all those in favor, raise your hands. Just to get a clear vision. Opposed, extensions, okay? Committee assignments, we just did that.
Yeah.
So let's move on to the debriefing from the election. Results. I don't know if everybody got this spreadsheet of the results or not, but. I always find it interesting how each town kind of votes towards the Warren article, whether it be the budget, like targeting treatment. And then obviously, the most controversial was the lights, which we expected. But it was interesting to see. Paul and I don't know, Lisa, do you want to lead this conversation as far as? I thought, you know, the support staff, the CBA was very much supported. Obviously, the tuition contracts don't really, there's no money attached to that article, so that usually passes with flying colors. The lights, I thought was interesting that Camden, or sorry, that Thornton's in Holderness passed the lights and there were 1,018 votes for the lights and 1,533 against. Some towns stronger in their votes than others, but I just thought it was some interesting numbers. And same with the budget. Given the trend around the states, it is, I'm happy to see the numbers with the budget as well, given some of the cuts I see across the state, amendments, all kinds of stuff. So I, I thought those numbers were pretty strong. But I just wanted to see if the board had any reflection, any other strategy as far as other things we could do better or things we could change. I think that's something Lisa and I have talked about as well.
Yeah, and I felt the same way about the operating budget, considering a lot that's going on out there in the state. That was, that was great.
You know, I think the board did a great job of keeping the increase low as far as from last year to this year, even given our shortage of funds. I did get a little worried about if the, some folks were pretty elevated about lights, so I didn't want that to affect the budget.
Yeah, I just want to express my gratitude for everybody that voted, just, you know, no matter what side you voted for. But it's pretty cool. This was my first time receiving a lot, I shouldn't say a lot, several emails from residents in Thornton, which is pretty good. I was excited and also feel a little bit pressured because there are some things I couldn't answer promptly and I wanted to make sure everything was accurate. But that being said, I just want to express my gratitude to admin team and the coaches that were accessible 24/7 if I needed them, because I did text off hours and weekends and everybody responded promptly, so thanks.
And you can see some of that legwork that you did in Thornton, I think, as part of the results. Paul, she did talk it up and you have athletic children that, you know, participated in those programs, so.
No, it's pretty neat. Like a couple of people I was communicating with, I mean, kind of almost became friends because they were either on one side or the other or asking where I stood, you know. And I don't know, I just related to how, at least I thought of it, because, you know, it's a one-time payment, right? I mean, we do a lot for the football team and the wrestling team and time is money, right? So it's like a one-time giving, you know, it doesn't happen throughout the year. So I kind of related to breakfasts because we eat pie a couple of breakfasts throughout the year and the Edstromans, community members that donate a lot of breakfast for the kids, especially the football team. And if you think about it, I'm cooking anywhere between 21, 30 plus dozen eggs at each sitting. These individuals, eggs are not cheap, but they're donated, so one, one-off. And it makes a huge difference, so. People seem to take that, reflect on that. I don't know, I think they, they'd change some of their things.
And, you know, Mary Beth, you're new to the board, but the approach, we've been talking about lights for years. And the approach was, we had had a lot of, I had had a lot of feedback on the shortened games and what can you do? And there's a board just really, well, with a couple of people that didn't, who strongly either were opposed, but some people in the middle that would just wanted the community to decide. And we wanted to put it out there. Unfortunately, there was kind of a spin around that we were pushing them, but we really just wanted people to execute their right to tell us where they were at. So that was kind of the history with that.
Thank you.
A lot of meetings spent, a lot of time spent talking about it. But you don't see a ton of people here, so it gets tricky when it does land. And they felt the 11th hour, but it certainly wasn't the 11th hour for us.
Yeah, what's interesting is that didn't happen a few years ago is the social media piece. So there is, you know, there's arguments all over social media that folks would let me know about. I tend to not join those groups. But there's a lot of misinformation or hearsay or, and it's really hard to defend from our end because I'm not going to go after every argument as a superintendent and say, no, that's not actually what they're used for or that's not in the budget, that, you know, Plymouth isn't the only town that votes on the high school budget. There's several towns that, you know. So it's interesting to kind of not be active in that because we can't obviously electioneer or do any of that stuff. But to, to monitor that narrative, you definitely saw some of that come into your deliberative session as far as whether Main Street, you know, the, the message was off or one-sided or not one-sided or, or it's just that online piece that was not about anything that we ever talked about at the board. So it's just interesting to control that and you never know what you're going to get on that night as far as. And it could be about, you know, we've heard it before about the budget, it's about, whatever it's about sports, it's big, so.
You still only get the turnout when it's about sports.
Always, yeah, not about a math curriculum.
And it got tricky with the three larger donors who were ready to put money on the table. The public wanted to see the money on the table, but then they said, well, now we're going to dial it back and see what the voting results are.
Yeah.
So that became an obstacle for us because I think we would have gained momentum if people saw a couple hundred thousand on the table, which was kind of somewhat alluded to with the three big donors. But then when they said, well, let's just see what the community does, I don't think. And just to let everybody know, so that money is getting returned.
Yeah.
We can't fundraise. That was another thing that was a misconception is that we were asking the public, can we do this? The public said, no, so there's no coming back from it, that 11,000, 10,000.
It's a no means no article, which means it's dead on the table for a year until your next, whatever, whatever we decide as far as moving forward. But right now, even if we got a donation of 750,000 the day after the vote, it's a no means no. So it's a dead article at that point.
Could it come back a year later with a promise of support from a sponsor?
I, I think the board has to have a pretty in-depth conversation, especially about being, you know, unified in their decision-making as far as where we want to go at this point, you know. And with what's coming down the pipe. I don't know what's coming down the pipe, nationally, locally, whatever. There's a lot of uncertainty right now. So I think, you know, I think this is the first of our reflection of the, of this, being through the process. I mean, we started this discussion a while back as far, and it was a lot of deliberation around, you know, the lights and the budget and the support contract. I mean, it's a lot that goes into that, those numbers and in the vote. So there was a lot of deliberation, especially around the lights that day that you guys deliberated that. It took us an hour discussion, I think, or 40 minute discussion about that.
Right. And the other piece too that was a little confusing to me, and I know I've talked to some board members and share it with me and just to share it with others, is that there was a lot of people that wanted those lights. And I mean, obvious 1,000 and a lot of people didn't come out to vote. But where were they when it came time to come to the budget hearing? Because I mean, in the deliberative session, because there was a flare in the audience, like we were just making this up. And that was, that was kind of, I was hoping that people that really wanted to see the lights were going to show up and talk it up and explain. I mean, we still have a problem with time. I don't know how you're going to deal with it, Todd, in the fall. And I don't know if that's something we talk about at the retreat, but we definitely have problems with athletes.
I just appreciate the whole process, really. I mean, everybody was great to the whole thing, you know, put out to the people and it all came back, boy, it did. So I think the process was, was very good. And, you know, yeah, we still got the problem, we'll, we'll work at, you know, find another ways to get around it. You know, referees shortage, hopefully it's better with time. And it's kind of an area thing in this area, there's not a lot of like soccer officials, for instance, so we got to play back-to-back. But, you know, we may have to play on Saturdays and do some other things to get those JV kids time.
Sure, yes. I mean, you've been dealing with it before. Yeah, appreciate that, Todd. Phil?
I had a couple of points. I had a couple of points. One, I was amazed at how many people alluding to the point you made, had no idea of the process around Senate Bill Two. The one number of people, well, gee, I live in Camden, I can't go vote on that. Or, what do you mean a deliberative session? And I don't know how you get, necessarily how you get that word out, but I was just taken aback by that. And I know Sam and I, a couple of years ago, had a discussion at one of the deliberative sessions where someone showed up and all of a sudden was asking questions, but it's because they didn't know, they could have done it earlier. I mean, I don't know why they didn't know, but they, and why would we expect them to know? I mean, that, that was really kind of telling to me. I don't, I don't know how you get around that necessarily. I would wonder if in the future, it's permissible for the board, when we vote on an article, when it goes on the man, on the warrant, that you can show the breakdown of the vote? But that's a board decision, I believe. And I would ask that we consider doing that, to show that, how the board votes on any article, whether it be unanimous or split vote or whatever it may be. And I found my rather simplistic analysis of the vote to be interesting in that, almost in converse order. The town with the highest tax rate voted strongest against it. I mean, right, right down in, you know, Thornton and Holderness had the lowest tax rate, which surprise, surprise, which kind of reflects the fact that it came down to basically a monetary issue, in my mind. And, you know, there were, as you alluded to, I think Kyler, in one of your statements, that it was, you know, philosophical as well as financial. But that certainly, to me, in the Plymouth vote, I thought was very strong, like on one way, but again, they had the highest tax rate, highest tax impact, so.
I always find the numbers to be interesting, because, you know, we have almost two thousand students and the low turn, I mean, you look at some of those numbers, they're pretty low, I mean, for the vote card, as far as votes coming out to vote in general, but, you know, we've been around, I sent out notifications, because I do find that my parents are voters that are least likely to go out. They just, you know, I don't know if it's expected, all this stuff, but, you know, it's, it's one of those things that, you're right, that that piece, that the Pemmey Baker cooperative is such a different format than, you know, we have nine independent districts and it's even hard for some of the towns sometimes to vote on the K eight for, you know, for the K eight budget. And then they're asking about the high school and it's like, no, that's not part of this discussion, you know? But it's something that has always kind of been around, but it's just that, you know, reminder, we put out an informational sheet of who can vote, you know? As far as the SAU, the Guareville Valley is part of my SAU, but they are not part of the Pemmey Baker district. And Ashland is part of the Pemmey Baker district, but not part of our SAU. So, I mean, it's, it's probably the most complicated SAU in the state, but in the Pemmey Baker district piece, so I'm going to continue to send out reminders about who can vote on certain articles and what they're voting on. Because I think that cleared it up a little bit as far as that goes, Paul.
Some people said they weren't going to vote on it, because they didn't want to go and sit through a two-and-a-half-hour meeting. They thought that, you know, like they're an individual town, like, I don't know, Thornton, the school district meeting, they'd have to go and sit through X amount of time or one of the town meetings. Actually, they don't need to, but they just weren't familiar with the process.
And there were less votes, so there was, yeah, there were some that skipped the question on some of those. So there's, there were more undervotes on that particular question, that didn't even answer it either way. I thought that was interesting.
The other thing too, is it's an off-year, there's no other elections, it's just town elections and we tend to have a much lower turnout in those years, so.
So I just thought, I thought it's a good thing to add, to just kind of bring it back to, you know, our strategy, the way you responded as a board. Anything else from there? Anything else?
No. Phil, were you surprised at how your community, were you surprised when they voted for all the lights? What were your thoughts about that?
No, Holderness, a lot like any of the towns that have lake frontage, they tend to be more liberal in spending. Like Interlakes, Moltenborough, I think the one exception might have been Wolfborough lost their budget this year, but the property ridge towns tend to be less concerned about cost impact.
Yeah, Boz, Boz went through, I was talking to that, one of the boards, the school members down there. Will that make us one of the few that doesn't have lights at this stage of the game?
Well, Boz passed it on a warrant article.
I think in the venue two, yeah, it would be one of the venue two.
And one of two that are left that don't have lights. Barb?
I just want to reiterate and support what Phil said about so many people out there that still don't understand the voting. They still don't understand that if they don't live in Plymouth, they cannot vote on our warrant articles and whatever. It just surprises me all the time.
Yeah, I had a couple of teachers at Plymouth Elementary School ask me, who can't vote for the high school, right? I said, USAU forty-eight? They said, yeah. And I said, now you can vote. No, it's, you know, I-
That's why I finally sent out something to, through school messenger, so that was all the teachers, faculty, parents that, here's who can vote.
When we send out our information to the parents, can we start way early next year and say, voting time is coming, know your rights or something like that and just bombard them so that-
Yeah, I can, I can give out, my, my information obviously has to be very neutral from my office. I can't say so yes on anything, but I, but this year I did send it out, we send out all the stuff electronically, it goes out to almost four thousand people.
But there's a large number of people that don't do electronics and the, we need to rely on the local media, the local newspapers if we can.
So we have done a survey with that and actually, most of our community relies on the electronic piece as far as our, we've done a survey with our population.
But just-
This is our, this is our par-population, but we put out the hearings, we put it out on Pemmey Baker TV, it's announced, I mean, it's on the website, it's, I mean-
My feedback has been, a lot of the people don't do the electronics and if they don't have someone in the school, they are not fully informed. So I think we have to kind of come up with a way to blast them earlier.
I know I'm overwhelmed with the amount of digital communications that are sent to me, whether it's socially or via email. And when I was electioneering, so many people came out after voting and said, I didn't understand what those warrants, what was on those warrants. They said, you know, I'm smart, but I still don't understand that legalese. And I think how the language of those warrants are written is inherently complicated. And I wonder if a voter's guide would help simplify it. California has one, Portland has one, it just puts it in layman's terms. I also wonder if, when we have, when you have gatherings here, just encouraging people, don't forget, voting is a month from now and this is what's on the ballot. And you don't have to take a stance either way, but reminding people, because I think we don't, they don't have it off, it's not a national, it's not federal. But reminding them to come out and vote, I think, is important, to do it on a more one-to-one basis or in a group basis. That face-to-face of like, Kyler, you voting next week? Don't forget, you know, when parents are walking out the door, I think would be helpful.
All right, anyone else? Thank you, Will. We'll continue this discussion. We continue. All right.
So this role as a school board member, I passed out two different handouts. One, so the Pemmey Baker district is part of, all of you are part of the New Hampshire School Board Association, so this comes directly from them. All members are required to take a training if you're new, so those dates were sent out if you needed to take them. There are usually webinar, webinars are pretty straightforward as far as that goes. But they're super helpful. They, the School Boards Association helps us with our policies, keeps us up to date with any legislation that's coming down quite a lot. I would ask that you re, I know there's a lot of electronic communication, but there is a lot of legislation coming down that could impact us tremendously. And some of them include, you know, decreasing of funding and changing the way health insurance works that could be impactful, that's huge to towns and schools, basically getting rid of the pools and looking at each district having to pay for their own claims, which could be, that number becomes like that moving target, like special education. And there's just all kinds, I can't even keep up with it right now, there's hundreds out there that are, that could change. So we're keeping an eye on it, our association goes down there as well, and then the New Hampshire School Boards Association acts on your behalf, but if you ever want to testify or just listen in on some of these issues, feel free, it's not that fun. You've been down there before, Bernie. Any questions on, on legislation at this point? I'm not going to update anything yet, because it's all in motion at this point. As far as executive orders, those continue to come down the pipe and like we, we always follow the state law. This board has always been great about just following the law and stay out of anything on one side or the other, although I know all of you have different opinions about all of it. That's where we've gone with that piece. This paper is just from the New Hampshire School Boards Association. The second handout is really around communication and it's guidelines around if you get a care, there is policy in place and procedures in place, and I don't know if Lisa, you want to go over that a little bit, as far as, you know, confidentiality, as far as whatever we talk about in the executive session is confidential. If you get an email, there's a process to that. If there's a complaint, there's a process to that, goes back to us. There is a chain of command and then obviously, when you're out in the public, you're acting as an individual, you're not a representative of the board. So it is super important, this board has always been great professionally. I'm sure you've seen boards that have broken down because of this alone, as far as not doing that. And this board has been through a lot, whether it's through legal or not, or whether it's personnel issues, HR stuff, but it's a lot to go through. You have, you know, over six hundred students and multiple staff and it's been great. I don't know if you're-
Yeah, no, that's-
Bernie, you haven't had anything as far as-
The School Board Association's great, I pop on there and watch videos often and they're super helpful. And then I do receive a lot of emails, but right away, it's like chain of command, chain of command, just constantly saying that. I don't want to hear, there could be a due process down the road, we're all involved in that, so we don't get involved in the beginning, so we pass that along.
And communication is through the chair and then to me, so we, we go that direction, but it's just super important.
Right. And yes, it's been a great group of people that haven't come on with their agendas and they've definitely just, what's the law, what are we faced with, what's great for the students in this building, faculty, and, yeah, we've been, it's been great, it's been good for that. I think all those points are the nail in the head right there.
That's it, that's the usual spiel every time.
Great. Any questions? Our privilege of the floor, we all know enough. Anybody have any?
I'll just say, I'm Melissa Murray from Plymouth. And first, I just want to share gratitude to everyone for your hard work before voting season started. I do have a daughter who's impacted by loss of play in the fall, so I, as a parent, am curious what the school will do to help get these kids playing more so that they can enter those varsity programs and have the same level of play. She's killing herself trying to make varsity so she can play a little, a full game next year. And so for the parents who are not full ball kids, who are impacted by this, you know, will the school share with us what our plans are for the fall, please, they get a full game to play? And maybe it's really to talk about that now, but just hoping that all of us are wondering.
Thank you. Great point, Melissa, thank you. Something to talk about down the road for sure, yeah. That's on the radar. Great, okay. Well, we passed everything out, board member concerns. All right, and then now I'm looking for someone to make that election date.
Did the, did the manifest make it around and then the MS twenty-two as well?